Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Well, good afternoon. Thank you so much for joining us today for our afternoon business meeting. I'm going to ask that we call this meeting to order in all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I didn't see Pastor Van De Veer here. There he is. So if I can call you up for the invocation, I think that'd be fantastic to go ahead and start the meeting with that.
Heavenly Father, we just come before you this afternoon, and we just invite you here. Lord, we invite you into every area of our lives, and we ask that you would just continue your work here, Lord, amongst our leaders, all of those who serve in this county, all the people that they serve. But that you would work in these days in which we live to draw many to yourself, Lord, that you would bring an end to all that we see the enemy doing, the division, the anger, these things that are worldwide, Lord, that you would prepare and send your Son to rule and reign in righteousness. And in the meantime, Lord, that we would bring you glory, that we would bring you honor, as we were created to do. We love you, Lord. We thank you. And it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of the agenda today?
Yes, sir. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda, and you have appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Great, thank you. And do any Commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda today?
No, sir.
No.
And I have none either. With that, we'll move on to a very special item, number two, in ceremonies and proclamations. Item 2A is a resolution declaring March 2025 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Maureen Waller, Special Projects Manager, presenting for staff. Maureen?
Hello. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm honored to be here today to present the resolution proclaiming March as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. I have the resolution. I'm happy to read it unless one of the Commissioners would like to.
Would any of the Commissioners like to read it, or shall we have Maureen proceed?
Happy to hear from Maureen.
Okay. Whereas on February 26, 1987, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed March as National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, dedicating this time to recognizing and promoting the inclusion of individuals with developmental disabilities across the United States. And whereas, over the past several decades, our society has made significant progress in advancing the rights, independence, and opportunities for people with developmental disabilities, fostering a more accessible and equitable community for all. And whereas, Douglas County voters demonstrated their commitment to this population in 2001 by approving a one-male property tax to fund services for individuals with developmental disabilities, generating funds that have supported critical programs since 2002. And whereas, more than 90% of these funds are allocated to developmental pathways, the county's community-centered board, with an additional 5.5% supporting a competitive grant program that has awarded over $5 million to local organizations serving individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And whereas, Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month is an opportunity to celebrate the contributions of individuals with developmental disabilities who enrich our schools, workplaces, and communities with their talents and resilience. And whereas, raising awareness and promoting inclusion helps challenge stereotypes, foster understanding, and create opportunities for all individuals to reach their full potential. And whereas, Douglas County is committed to ensuring that all residents, regardless of ability, have full access to housing, employment, education, and recreation, contributing to their well-being and integration into all aspects of life. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas County, Colorado hereby proclaims March 2025 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, and encourages all residents to recognize the achievements of individuals with developmental disabilities while supporting efforts to build a more inclusive and empowering community.
Thank you very much, Maureen. Any questions for staff? Or comments?
If it pleases the Board, we have some members of our developmental disabilities community here. If you want to, if you would like to hear from a couple folks.
We would. I'll ask if there's any questions or comments for staff, and then we'll ask those folks to come up. Okay.
Well, you know, really, I don't know any questions, Maureen. I always appreciate the work that you put into our disabled community. The work that you do is great. The way you keep the Commissioners advised on all the comings and goings is very, very helpful. But thanks to everybody in our developmental disabilities community for showing up today. I don't know, guys, it's always, I guess, you know, this is like one of our duties that we have here on the Board that doesn't really feel like a duty. It feels like an opportunity. An opportunity to take care of the least, some of the most vulnerable in our population. And so I always really appreciate the opportunity to hear from y'all. And if Kevin has anything to say, that'd be great. But look forward to hearing from them.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Ben Winkle?
Thank you so much. And I'm also looking forward to hearing more from our community today. It is a very special day here in Douglas County. We are so blessed to have the folks from Developmental Pathways and the folks from our very county government here that do yeoman's work to ensure equality of life for all of Douglas County. And so we are blessed to have you here today and celebrate you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I could not agree more. And with that, I'd like to invite out members of the public that would like to comment.
Commissioners, I think this would be so great because, I mean, I think we should include more of this because, like, it's hard. Because I do work at the collective, but also, like, it's hard when you call in a places that won't hire us. And I feel like that Douglas County should do more of that and be more open-minded because I feel like with Douglas County being more open-minded about hiring us, that that would be a good opportunity. Because I have called around different places that don't hire people with ID. And I think that having that would be so great. And also, having that month be that developmental month is great. And also, it shows that we are open and that I would like our community to be a lot more open because I do see less inclusion. But we do have inclusion in the collective. But seeing how Douglas County hires certain people with ADD, it just hurts my heart because there are places that I have called around to that don't hire people. And so if Douglas County could open those doors to conclude, to be included, to be inclusion and open-minded, that would help our county open so much more.
Well, you are a great member of our community, and thank you for all you do. And we love the collective. But if you want to get a good pastry, go to the collective. It might be a little too sweet, but that hits me just right. So thank you so much. Additional public comment? And if you want to just state your name and where you're from when you approach, we'd appreciate that.
Yeah. My name's Nathan Goodman, and I'm from right here in Castle Rock. Because I moved down to Unity in January that you guys helped get kicked off, kicked off the ground, and have been living there since January and loving it. And one thing I'd like to bring up is sadly, even nowadays, the public in general seems just not how to talk to us in general. And it still is a little frustrating, even though we have gotten a lot more enlightened than we have been. But just so a little more public education about disabled people and who we are would definitely be a good thing.
Outstanding. Nathan, thank you so much. Appreciate you joining us. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name's Amelia McKeon, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer for Parker Personal Care Homes. We are a provider agency. We just celebrated our 30th anniversary. I just wanted to start by thanking you for recognizing Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month and for being such an incredible support between Douglas County assisting us with opening the hive and our support and our friends at Developmental Pathways. We cannot thank you enough for continuing to invest into this community, into this population. It is really incredible to be a part of a county and organization that continues to prioritize the needs of some of its most vulnerable citizens. So thank you so much, and I so appreciate it. And we appreciate all the work that you and Developmental Pathways do in supporting our community.
Well, thank you. And, you know, frankly, the credit goes to you for giving us the honor and ability to partner with you. You all are providing that care to the most valuable among us. So thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Any additional citizen comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioners, I'm Shanda McLaren. I'm the Executive Director of Integrated Life Choices, and we support, have quite a presence in Castle Rock and Douglas County in general of both residential. And you guys helped us with some grant money along with Developmental Pathways to open a day program here that was much needed. And I know that a lot of parents have expressed a lot of appreciation, and we've made sure and educate them where that money came from. And we sure do. Thank you. So.
Thank you. Thank you so much for joining us. Any additional public comment? Okay. Seeing no additional public comment in the room, let me open it up for any public comment online. Is there anyone online that would like to make a comment?
Thank you, Commissioner Layden. I have no online comment today.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Well, if it pleases the Board, I do have a motion to approve a resolution declaring March 2025 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month.
It's my tremendous honor to second that motion.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? You know, I just want to pause for a moment and reflect on the incredible work that is done in the developmental disabilities community. And, you know, I see the amazing group. Nicole from Wellspring and your staff are just tremendous. Everyone from Parker Personal Care, Integrated Life Services. I've had the honor of serving on the Board of Developmental Pathways for six years, and now my honorable colleague, Commissioner Van Winkle, is now serving for Developmental Pathways, and certainly has a breadth of experience from his statewide service as a former senator. But, you know, things like this, we don't always do a lot of. We don't do a lot of proclamations with nothing behind it. And today is a proclamation with a whole lot behind it. And that investment that the county made, not only with all of the amazing projects with our partners, but specifically with Unity on Park, is just so encouraging to me. I don't have direct personal experience in my circle with individuals that have intellectual or developmental disabilities, but I've gotten to know so many that do. And it just is heartwarming when you realize that kids who have developmental disabilities have saints as parents that literally give up their lives to care for their kids. But then these kids grow up, and they cross that 18-year-old threshold, and suddenly they're in their 20s, or in their 30s, or in their 40s. And those developmental disabilities do not go away just because they get older. But what does happen is a lot of times those caretakers pass on and are no longer with us. And I am so heartened to remember a particular young woman who had lost her folks and was 23 and trying to figure out how to navigate her life as an individual with ADD. And Unity on Park is such a great component of that puzzle piece, in addition to all of your great work. So today, I will be deeply in support of my colleague's motion, knowing that it isn't just a proclamation. It's a lot of work represented by everyone here in the room. So thank you for that. Any further discussion?
Just one more thing, Chair. Only because we do have a couple residents of Unity on Park that are here today. And once again, I have to take the opportunity to tell Nicole DeVries, "I told you."
Well said. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Before we move on, we'd love to invite all members of the ADD community to join us for a photo up front. Okay, thank you. What a great group. Really appreciate everybody coming by to celebrate Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. With that, we'll move on to item three, which is our consent agenda. I'll first ask if there's any citizen comment related to any item on our consent agenda. Any citizen comment? Okay, seeing none going online, is there any citizen comment with regard to any item on our consent agenda?
I have no online comment, sir.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or emotion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, where are we here? Oh, I move to approve the requests in all items A through W and Z through AL of the consent agenda. Items, did we pull items X and Y? Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Items X and Y have been pulled from it.
I will second.
Okay, so we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously. With that, we'll move on to our regular agenda, and our first item is item 4A, a contract for service with River North Transit LLC for microtransit services in the amount of $2,901,410. Ryan Arthur, Community Program Coordinator, presenting for staff. Hi, Ryan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ryan Arthur, representing the Department of Community Services. Before you today is a request to approve the contract for services between River North Transit LLC and Douglas County for the operation of microtransit services in the amount of $2,901,410 through March 31, 2026. Douglas County staff were directed to secure a bid for service through a request for proposal process initiated on January 24, 2025. River North Transit LLC, a subsidiary of Via Transportation Incorporated, responded to the RFP and proposed to service with an annual cost of $2,901,410. During a work session with the Board of County Commissioners on March 11, 2025, staff was directed to prepare a contract for services with Via. Currently, Via provides microtransit in Lone Tree, as seen in the green shaded area of this map. Their turnkey service solution and existing local partnerships provide a model for expansion into the Highlands Ranch area. Via will provide microtransit service throughout all of Highlands Ranch with points into and out of Lone Tree. The proposed hours of operation would be Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. To accommodate this service, Via plans to have up to 15 vehicles available at peak hours and anticipates a ridership capacity between 2,200 and 2,400 rides per week. Via has proposed an all-inclusive solution for Highlands Ranch that includes their end-to-end software platform, robust service design, planning and mobilization services, driver training, a call center for customer service, vehicles and maintenance, marketing, and community engagement. Services will include a mobile app and phone-based system to book a ride, ADA-accessible vehicles, connections to commercial areas along for both employment and shopping, connections to local schools, parks, and recreation centers, connections to local hospitals and medical centers, connections to the RTD bus and light rail, including the County Line and Littleton mineral light rail stations, and access to real-time trip data to make system performance and improvement and adjustment decisions. The proposed microtransit service will be scheduled to launch in the late spring of 2025 and will be available for everyone. Staff recommends the approval of the contract for services with River North Transit LLC in the amount of $2,901,410. We are privileged to have Joe Martin, Partner Success Director at Via Transportation Incorporated, here today, and we would be happy to field any questions the Board may have today. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for that presentation. Any questions or comments for staff?
No questions for staff.
Okay, Commissioner Ben Winkle?
No, Mr. Chair. This is all very good news, and thank you, Mr. Arthur.
Well, this is incredibly good news, and our thanks to the professionals from Via for joining us. You know, this has been part of a really significant, ongoing discussion we've had as a Board for a while. And Commissioner Teal has done a phenomenal job representing us from a transportation standpoint on most things transportation for many years. And one thing we know for sure is that the citizens of our community are not getting the return on investment for RTD dollars. People are not riding the bus. People really do not ride light rail. We've seen that decrease about 17% since COVID, even though it cost taxpayers about $124 million per stop. Not necessarily us, but that regional group that developed light rail. We started talking about this notion of how do people travel today? And how do you capture that first mile and last mile? And the obvious answer is rideshare. We know so many citizens that take advantage of Uber and Lyft, and it gets them not just from point A to point B with some walking and biking to your home, but door-to-door. So fast forward to this last year, and Lone Tree got to celebrate 10 years of success with the Lone Tree Link. And when many counties were saying, hey, let's do some research and some studies around microtransit, our response was, well, we have this study. It's Lone Tree, and they're doing a phenomenal job, amazing return on investment, which we also were able to partner on financially. So I'm really pleased that the three of us have advanced this measure forward with our staff and our community partners and private sector partners to grow and build upon that success in Lone Tree. We had Lone Tree in, and I believe we have their blessing to continue to expand upon their great project. But the concept is really simple. If you're a senior in Highlands Ranch trying to get to Sky Ridge, you now can do that for free right on your phone through this link, through the Douglas County link, and vice versa. Whereas people were limited within the incorporated boundaries of Lone Tree in the past, they now can go beyond that into unincorporated Douglas County, most of Highlands Ranch. Really excited to continue the conversation with our municipal partners in Parker and Castle Rock. Probably a little too early to speak on that today, but I think the hope might be to expand this service, if it's successful, to those municipalities, if they have interest and some willingness to partner. But again, this builds upon the work of the Older Adults Initiative, which George has chaired, providing seniors with access to rides, but also people with developmental disabilities. Some of these vehicles are specially equipped to accommodate those that may have disabilities, not to mention young people. So it really hits all of those needs out of the park, and it's a safety solution. It's a safe ride for people that may not be in a condition to drive, for them to be able to get into a rideshare and go throughout the county safely. So really exciting. I will reserve my vote for following citizen comment, but just wanted to again thank you and all of our partners and our staff for the great work. Let me open it up for any citizen comment. Any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item?
I just wanted to quickly take a minute to introduce myself. My name's Joe Martin. I lead our partnerships team across the Southwest here with Via from Southern California to the Rockies. So here on behalf of you, I'd just say we are so excited to be working with you all and expanding the rate work we're doing in Lone Tree, and happy to answer any questions that you all have, if helpful, but looking forward to making this a successful partnership.
Joe, thank you for taking the time to be with us. And I know you've been on our calls in the past, and we've really appreciated that just hands-on connection to this great project. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, Joe. Just wanted to take a second. Hey, thanks a lot for indulging our kind of crazy ideas about how to handle the kind of cross-district transportation. I mean, I think we're, we still do have an eye, as the Chair mentioned, to take this across the county. And we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to solve that problem sooner than later. So thanks for working with us on coming up with that solution. And I don't know. I look forward to seeing it on the ground.
Of course. Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Ben Winkle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I also don't have a question, but I did just want to say thank you to you and your, the folks at your company. Because if Lone Tree tried this for the first time 10 years ago, it failed, or somehow you provided a poor service or a service that wasn't fitting the needs of the citizen, we'd never be here today. So good work over the last 10 years to you and your whole team. Be sure to pass on our regards to everyone and thank them for their dedication and commitment to Douglas County.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comment with regard to this item? Okay, not seeing any in the room. Is there any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, so with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion here in a second. I just wanted to share with everybody, because I know we got folks in the room, and you're probably wondering, listen, we're Douglas County. We don't like transit. What's this microtransit BS that they're talking about? Here's the deal. Commissioner Layden, I don't know if you remember, but back when I was still in the Castle Rock Council, you, my predecessor, and Kevin's predecessor appointed myself and Mayor Malay, Lone Tree's Mayor J.K. Malay, to the RTD Reimagination Committee. And I will just tell everybody, there was not a whole lot of imagination for RTD, whether on that committee or not. And, I mean, over and over again, we were trying to unpack that huge bloated organization. And anytime we would throw out an idea for change, we would hear the internal stakeholder in coming back from RTD about just how impossible it was. And, you know, these ideas of how to make RTD better. No, no, those won't work. And the reason one wouldn't work always came down to money. That meant that more money had to pour into RTD, not to deliver better service, but merely to keep RTD, RTD. And they didn't want it changed. They didn't want to evolve. They certainly did not want to hear the concerns and requests from Mayor Malay or myself. And so as we, once I came on the Board, and we're like, there's got to be a better way forward. Well, we turned to Lone Tree. And Lone Tree, kind of, I'd like to think they showed us the way. And it is a way I do think will be good for the rest of the county eventually. And again, thank you, Via. Appreciate you guys working with us to expand the service. Because at the end of the day, all we were trying to do is ask, what do people need to get around our county? What do people need to get around their neighborhood when it's too far to walk and it's really not far enough to drive their own vehicles? I think this is the way forward. I think it's the appropriate solution for Douglas County. I really look forward to seeing how this expansion into Highlands Ranch works, and I really look forward to us working on seeing what we can do to push it through the rest of the county. So if it pleases the Board, I do have a motion to approve a contract for services with the River North Transit LLC for microtransit services in the amount of $2,901,410.
I will second that motion. Let me just add a few statements in that, is that this is a tremendous day for all of Douglas County, a very tremendous day for Anchors Green and the people of Highlands Ranch. Ranch, 100, over, well over 100,000 people up there, which will be introduced to this service here very shortly. Since I first joined the board, this is kind of something that it feels like has gotten kicked into really high gear, starting in January, in what brings us to today. But really, the credit goes years before that, to especially you two commissioners who put yeoman's work in to get us to this point. And just as a citizen of Douglas County myself, me and my family, we will be very excited to have this. Folks of Highlands Ranch and much of Douglas County has been jealous of Lone Tree and the link for several years now. And so to connect those two large communities on our northern, the northern part of Douglas County, those hundreds, well over 100,000 people, plus Lone Tree, plus Acres Green now, into kind of one cohesive transportation plan is a big day, it's a big achievement. You two, in particular, ought to be very proud, and I, myself, just being here in my short time, am very proud to be here for this moment.
Well, that's well appreciated, Commissioner Van Winkle, and this is my district and your district. So I'm hearing that maybe we might be able to take the first rides with our fellow citizens on the Douglas County Link and maybe traverse counties, and then hopefully we can get into yours as well, George.
You know, before we, before we go to the vote, Chair, I guess I do need to, I might be telling our colleague for the first time, but reminding you, you know, Kevin, we were looking at doing something like this last fall, and we were like, yeah, maybe we, in a couple of years, we could probably scope it out. It's actually the chair who really put the hammer down and said, why are we waiting? Why are we waiting? If this is something we can do now, if this is something we can afford, we could get it into this year's budget without raising taxes, without busting the bank, why don't we go now? So really, if anybody deserves any credit for what we see today, it really is Chair Layden.
Well, I won't accept it, though I appreciate that. One thing I have learned in seven years is that you can do nothing alone as a commissioner, and you really need at least two or three votes, and it's been really great to work with you all so far.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we can meet at Park Meadows, and we can raise some tax revenue for the people of Douglas County, because I know this costs $2.9 million today, but the amount of tax revenue that's going to come in, amount of commerce, amount of movement of people from point A to point B, is gonna be well worth it, and it's much appreciated.
That's a great point, and the anticipation is that through the additional sales tax revenue, it could almost pay for itself if people take advantage of it. So that's really well stated. I believe we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously, 3-0. We'll move on to Item 4B, which is an amendment of Resolution R19-029, Resolution for the Control and Licensing of Household Pets, Douglas County, Colorado. Commander Alan Stanton presenting for staff. Hi, Commander.
Let's make sure we're working here today. Commissioners, thank you for seeing us today and hearing us on this resolution amendment. And to the public, again, we're here today before the commissioners. I'm Commander Alan Stanton, Douglas County Sheriff's Office. And today, we are requesting an amendment to Resolution R19-029, which is the Resolution for the Control and Licensing of Household Pets in Douglas County, Colorado. And a quick summary or historical for those that aren't aware, and the public, I know the commissioners are aware, Douglas County Sheriff's Office and Douglas County contract our animal control services through the Humane Society of the Pikes Peak Region. That's best when you have people that are trained and certified in animal control, that those are the ones that are actually providing those services. And I can tell you, historically, the citizens of Douglas County are very pleased with their services, and we are too at the Sheriff's Office, and again, they do a great job. But today, the reason we're here is we're looking to, we have some animal control definition changes and control and licensing procedural changes related to these animal control services that we're asking to amend that resolution. And again, we have an obligation as the Sheriff's Office to make sure that we stay consistent with the current legislation and that our resolution meets that, so we're serving the citizens the way we should for animal control. I'd like to introduce Sergeant Brianna Muns of that unit, and she's gonna give you some information on the summary of those amendment changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commander. Welcome.
Hello, Commissioners. As he stated, my name is Brianna Muns. I am the Animal Law Enforcement Sergeant here in Douglas County and employed by the Humane Society of the Pikes Peak Region. Again, as he previously stated, we're requesting revisions be made to the current R19-029 Resolution in an effort to be more consistent with the current legislation and better serve Douglas County. We are requesting that additions and modifications be made in the definition section that will further define our authority and allow for additional enforcement in areas where it is necessary. We have proposed moving the definition for abandon and shelter into the definition section opposed to being defined in the resolution itself. Modifications to the current definitions have been proposed for at-risk animal, proper enclosure, and household pet and control. We have suggested adding in language to the household pet definition to clarify that this definition is not intended to exclude service animals, to clarify that the same expectations for welfare and public safety apply. Additionally, at-risk animal currently only pertains to dogs approaching people in a menacing manner. We are requesting to modify this definition to pertain to household pets approaching people and domestic animals in a menacing manner, or causing minor injury to a person or domestic animal. This will allow our office to address concerns regarding animals that are being reported to chase livestock in a menacing manner, animals that are being reported to run at large and engage in attacks that don't result in injury, or attacks that cause minor injury. The proposed changes to at-risk would also include adding in a definition for minor injury, which would be an injury that does not require medical attention. The addition of this definition will further separate the two resolutions for at-risk animal and potentially dangerous animal, as potentially dangerous animal does require an injury that required medical attention. We have proposed modifying the definition of proper enclosure to match the standard of what is approved by Douglas County Animal Services for court-ordered containment in a potentially dangerous animal case. We have also proposed a modification for the definition of control to allow dogs to be walked on a 10-foot leash, as this will provide an owner adequate control over their dog to better ensure public safety. We additionally have proposed adding a definition for mistreat and neglect that mirrored the language from the Colorado State Cruelty Definitions to replace the current county neglect. This is in an effort to allow these definitions to appropriately fit more circumstances that rise to this level of violation. We have requested to amend the current noisy household pet requirement from 10 minutes of relatively continuous barking to a proposed 20 minutes. This time better suits the overall demographic in Douglas County and better serves our rural communities. We have proposed to modify the licensing resolution to include cats and, include cats and to require that both cats and dogs be required to be vaccinated against rabies. Including cats within this resolution assists in preventing the public safety threat that is posed by residents and their pets when they're contacted by an unvaccinated animal. Douglas County Animal Services has also proposed adding in additional language to the already existing impoundment and disposition sections of the resolution that will further detail an animal control officer's authority as it pertains to impoundment of household pets and the financial obligation of pet owners if their pet is impounded in conjunction with county charges. Adding in this language will further detail the disposition of the household pet if that financial obligation is not met. We've also proposed adding in clear language to clarify that a court-ordered potentially dangerous animal permit ends after two years unless it's stated otherwise by the courts. Currently, if an animal is placed on a potentially dangerous animal permit through the court, there is a $100 permit fee that is paid annually by the pet owner. However, there's not clarification in the current resolution as to how this payment is collected. We've suggested adding in language to the resolution itself to define that the payment is to be made at the Douglas County Sheriff's Office Records Division. We've also proposed to remove certain language from the Dangerous Household Pet Resolution, suggesting to remove the language that allows the animal to be moved outside of the county. We're proposing to remove this language to ensure that the public safety threat isn't just moved into a different county, as it does not eliminate the overall threat that the animal poses. And lastly, we are requesting that a violation for abandonment and neglect are moved to the same fine schedule as the potentially dangerous animal fine schedule. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Thank you for that presentation. That was fantastic. Any questions for the presenters with regard to this item?
No question for me, Mr. Chair. This is just a thoughtful update, and we've discussed it in the past. Very much appreciate the very true diligence that went into crafting it, and I'm glad we're here today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Teal?
Yeah, everything I'm seeing in the package shows that this is what was presented in a work session a couple of weeks back by the team. Again, my concerns always were, you know, and probably reflecting my own district of the rural nature of the county, that I just wanted to make sure that we weren't drawing up regulations that would be like more appropriate for downtown Denver, more appropriate for some of the closer-in metro communities. I think my concerns were addressed by the presentation, and I think, actually, there's some good common sense changes and updates that I appreciate the Sheriff's Department and Animal Control bringing our way.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Teal. So I would agree with my colleagues and open it up for any citizen comment with regard to this item. Is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Yes, ma'am?
I just have a question.
Ma'am, if you want to approach the podium and just state your name and where you're from.
Yeah. Kim Greer, and I'm from the Larksburg area. I just had a question on the medical, like, minor injury and medical intervention. Like, if a dog scratched somebody or something, and it doesn't require you going to the doctor, but you're obviously, you know, you're gonna wash it and stuff like that, do you have anything in your medical, does it say, like, professional medical intervention, or does it just say medical intervention? Just a clarification.
Yeah, absolutely. Let me just refer to the actual definition that has been proposed.
And what we'll do is take all citizen comment, and then we'll reflect back to have you answer all those questions.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Greer. We appreciate that. Any additional citizen comment with regard to this item? Okay, any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay. I'll close citizen comment and turn back to our presenters to respond to the citizen comment.
Yeah, so to answer your question, the proposed definition for mine injury, minor injury that would be added to the at-risk means any physical injury that results in scratches, bruising, or other physical injury that does not require immediate medical attention. So that would encompass that scratch, like a nail scratch or something along those lines that does not require an immediate medical attention.
Okay, but medical attention.
Ma'am, I'm gonna have to pause you there. Thank you for that response. I'll bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Oh, Mr. Chair, and of course, if you'd like to comment further, that is perfectly acceptable. However, I really appreciate your work. If it's something that involves dogs especially, typically it's something that gets the public very heated and very engaged in the fact that we're here today doing this update, and the public has, it's been on our calendar for quite some time now, seems very acceptable of it. I think that's a, that's a very good thing. So thank you so much for your hard work in bringing it to us. And again, it's kind of us three commissioners. I represent a community that's very different than Commissioner Teal's district, and very, even very different from Commissioner Layden's district, and the fact that we can pass things like this, I think it's a, it's a good day for Douglas County.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you have a motion?
Oh, I do. That was the point of my whole thing. My apologies. Mr. Chair, I move to, I move an amendment of resolute, yeah, an amendment of Resolution R19-029, Resolution for Control and Licensing of Household Pets, Douglas County, Colorado. Move to approve.
Happy to second.
Okay, so we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And thank you for those, those questions from the public. I will remind our board and staff that we are now two minutes over for our public hearing and land use meeting, so we'll try to speed it up here as much as we can. We're gonna move on to Item 4C, which is the 2025 Master Services Agreement with TESSA for Domestic Violence Safe House Operations in the amount of $350,000. We have Stephen Dodger, Community Programs Administrator, presenting for staff. Hi, Stephen.
Hello. All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Stephen Dodger, representing the Department of Community Services. Before you today is a request to approve the 2025 Master Services Agreement between TESSA and Douglas County for operation of the Domestic Violence Safe House in the amount of $350,000 through December 31, 2025. In 2023, Douglas County commissioned a domestic violence needs assessment to better understand the needs of individuals and families experiencing DV. Increased physical safety and improved access to housing were identified as the top priorities highlighted by the survey respondents. To address the identified need, a request for information was released to identify a service provider for the DV Safe House that would work with the county. On November 5, 2024, the county purchased a facility currently used to provide DV shelter services with the goal of increasing its capacity to serve victims. The county's DV Safe House aims to provide safe, supportive environments with 22 beds that can accommodate large families. The DV Safe House will offer structured stays of up to seven weeks and provide trauma-informed transitional services. TESSA submitted an proposal to operate the DV Safe House and provide its support services in Douglas County. Staff recommends TESSA as the Safe House operator due to their extensive experience in managing DV shelters, comprehensive program offerings, and strong partnerships with law enforcement and community organizations. TESSA will use these partnerships to enhance safety, crisis response, and emergency shelter options provided to survivors in Douglas County. Under this agreement, TESSA will operate a 24/7 trauma-informed Safe House program and hotline to support survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, and human trafficking. The Safe House will provide shelter for individuals and families in imminent danger, offering 20 beds with an additional two-bed, emergency beds. Shelter residents will have access to supportive services that promote long-term self-reliance. TESSA will help survivors secure permanent housing through navigation services and connect them with community resources. The contract establishes a maximum liability of $350,000 for operation of the DV Safe House and providing the necessary supportive services through December 31, 2025. TESSA will provide monthly reports to Douglas County, which track program utilization, referrals, and outcomes, ensuring survivors receive the supports needed to rebuild their lives. The following short video that we have will help to convey the impact that the services provided by TESSA has and the resulting transformation they have on current recipients of their services.
Shoved me against a pantry, and that clicked moment of, this will never stop. It doesn't matter that I'm carrying this person's child, it doesn't matter to him. He's always going to be this way, and now I have to think about another person on top of myself, and that's when I knew I had to go. It honestly feels like a lifetime ago. It's weird looking back, because it just, I don't even feel like myself and the person I am now, and it's just so empowering to know that with the help and support of so many people and my own choices, I am where I am today, and that person that hurt me can't take that away from me anymore. I describe my life as insanely beautiful. I can't help but, like, smile just thinking about it. I mean, my son has been the most amazing part of my life. I got to find a love that is healthy and supportive. My career has really made everything for me, is I get to help people. I, and I couldn't have done it without all of the things I know now and the support that I had. I feel like anything's possible for me now.
Just one powerful story of change and impact with TESSA's support, and many more to come here in Douglas County. Staff recommends approval of the 2025 Master Service Agreement between TESSA and Douglas County for operation of the Domestic Violence Safe House in the amount of $350,000. We are privileged to have Ann Markley, Chief Executive Officer of TESSA, joining us online, and we would be happy to field any questions the board may have today. Thank you.
Wonderful. Stephen, thank you so much, and we'd love to welcome our partner from TESSA up to provide any additional input on, on the operations.
She's online.
Oh, okay.
She couldn't be here in person, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Troy, can we unmute our colleague from TESSA?
Sure. Can you tell me her name? Because I'm not seeing.
It's Ann Markley. There she is.
Oh, there she is. Go ahead.
Hi, Ann.
Good afternoon, and thank you so much for letting me join you virtually. I apologize for not being there in person. I am touring colleges with my son, so thank you for allowing me to comment in this way. I think Stephen really, really did do a great job of talking about the services that we're wanting to provide and being able to showcase that video of a survivor that we have worked with. I just wanted to take the time to thank you for recognizing the needs of the survivors in your community, for wanting to make a change, for wanting to be able to create a safe space, and seeing us as somebody who can partner with you in that, in that moving forward, and we really look forward to this opportunity. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ann. And, listen, those college tours are important. I really hope you are touring CSU at some point. I really hope you are touring CSU at some point.
So we will be there. We're in Arizona right now, but he's not sold, so I think CSU's gonna be the one.
All right. We like that. Well, you know, I would want to pause and just reflect upon the history of this particular issue as we kind of navigate through this presentation. And I think first and foremost, Anne, thank you so much for giving us the chance to partner with you. You just completely wowed us, wowed our board, and your capacity to serve those in need, specifically women and children fleeing domestic violence in our county, in the way that our county needs, was really impressive. So thank you for doing that with us recently, and I know we're really encouraged. You know, several years ago, the county partnered with Crisis Services to purchase the building that they're operating out of, and it's in an undisclosed location to keep those individuals, those victims, safe. But for us, I, I really marvel at the, the conversation, George, that you and I had around, you know, a building shouldn't just be for administration. And at that time, it was about masking up and keeping people out, and we certainly understand the nature of the pandemic. But fast, fast forward to today, the need to have a location that provides wraparound services, legal services, mental health counseling, job counseling, all of those critical needs that can be served in a co-located facility is truly tremendous. And we know that crisis looks different in Douglas County, and there's sometimes economic duress that goes with being in the most prosperous county in the state. So this is really exciting, and I just want to thank staff for the great work, Stephen and Doug and team, for hearing the vision of the board and bringing us a, a great potential partner, a great new partner, hopefully not potential for much longer. Additional questions or comments from our board?
I'll go ahead. I'd reserve my questions until after public comment, sir.
Okay, thank you so much. So with that, we'll open it up for any citizen comment, any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item. Okay, any citizen comment online?
And I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
In terms of, you're right, Abe, you know, I remember when we had that conversation and really kind of had to ask the hard question of, are we really getting a solution to what, what we envisioned for domestic violence services here in the county? And, and the answer came back, no. The answer came back wanting. We did, we commissioned a study with the, the Health Institute, the same people who helped us out when we formed the new Board of Health and the new Health Department, and once again, the answer came back, no. We weren't getting the kind of services that we felt were needed here in Douglas County and, and that we were paying for, that we, that we were subsidizing with the public dollar. And we decided to make a change. The agreement before us today with TESSA, I think that is that solution that we, we wanted, that solution that we actually need. The, you know, we, we don't like talking about the need for domestic violence services in a county like our own. We, we do want those idyllic neighborhoods where, no, you, you don't have to worry about relationships between the parents, where the kids never get lost between the cracks. That's not the place that we think we are, and yet, well, it is kind of what we get sometimes. And so we could, we could put our heads in the sand and decide that it's not there and we don't need to worry about it, or we can just come to terms with the facts and then take action. I think this is the appropriate action, and so if it does please the board, I do have a motion to approve the 2025 Master Service Agreement with TESSA for Domestic Violence Safe House Operation in the amount of $350,000. And I ask for a second.
Well said, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, and I'll just say this is another great example where Douglas County is not waiting on the state for a solution, that we, that the people of Douglas County have a serious need, maybe very few or none more serious than this need, when especially a woman is in a time of crisis. And the folks that work in this industry, the works, there are folks that work with safe houses like this, are the saints among us, and they, I hold them in the highest regard in anything ways the county can do to support, including this motion today, I'll fully and wholeheartedly support.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? I just would say I would, I agree with my colleagues, and I think TESSA is the key to our future success when it comes to crisis services. Go Rams. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. So with that, we are 15 minutes over, but I do see folks here in the gallery, I don't want to forego the opportunity for some public comment, so I'll take a personal privilege to extend public comment for about 10 minutes, but then also respect the rights of those who are coming on a land use application to present their matters to the board. So with that, we'll move on to citizen comment. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda, which did have public comment already. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. If you would, please state your name and where you reside prior to taking comments or making comments. You will have up to three minutes. Any disruptive behaviors such as impeding officials, refusing to leave when asked, or attempting to disrupt the meeting may result in criminal charges. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Is there any citizen comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kim Greer from Larkspur, and why do I care? I've been a resident in Douglas County since 1972, 10 years as a Larkspur Fire volunteer, co-race director of the Wildlander at Sandstone, hence the shirt, which supported the Larkspur Fire Department and Wildland Firefighters Foundation, a volunteer and supporter of DLC, officer of the Larkspur Historical Society, and a runner, hiker, backpacker, camper. My grandkids are seventh-generation Coloradans, Abe.
You got me beat by two generations. That's pretty good, Kim. Wow.
I love the outdoors, this state, and this county. As a trail ambassador, thank you for the opportunity last weekend to attend a Leave No Trace workshop at Sandstone. I was reminded of the developed areas within Sandstone. Additional activities are already being held in these areas, and more could be added. For example, reservations of existing sites would support group activities. Fire pits could be allowed, as they are at other venues, there is a fire pit there, with proper inspections and permits from Larkspur Fire on a case-by-case basis. This would all be within the existing building envelopes. In addition to being more easily monitored, there are more amenities. Such activities are more likely to comply with the conservation easement and would not involve disturbing existing vegetation or building trails not already identified in the plan and easement. Moving on to other camping opportunities near Douglas County, there's a perception that there are limited opportunities. Perhaps camping options need to be more widely identified. Recreational activities within Douglas County include more than 146,000 acres of Roxborough and Castlewood Canyon State Parks, as well as Pike National Forest and the Chatfield State Recreation Area, both of which allow camping. Dispersed primitive minimalist camping is allowed almost everywhere within Pike National Forest. No permits are required. Campers must abide by seasonal condition or fire bans. Indian Creek Camping Area is just 27 minutes from Castle Rock, and permits are not required. Numerous campgrounds near Deckers, Lone Rock, Osprey, Uzell, Pat, a Platte River, Flat Rocks, all exist. For the camping experience, there's, of course, Jellystone. There are numerous areas in nearby counties, including Jefferson County, where you can camp on open spaces, just not on the conservation easements, that are probably closer to our neighbors in Highlands Ranch than Sandstone. We all need to do the right thing and preserve this area as originally intended instead of using open space money to expand camping. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Greer. And not only did you beat me in the generations, I'm only a fifth-generation Coloradan, but I just have to say thank you for those years of service. We have people in our community like you that have been around for decades, serving in a variety of capacities, and I'm always amazed by the level of intellect and experience that citizens bring to this room. My commissioner colleagues throughout the metro area do not benefit from that at all times, and we certainly do. So thank you for bringing us some, some thoughtful ideas. Additional citizen comment? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Alan Sedbeck, a 24-year resident of Perry Park. I had some, some sharp comments prepared based on your responses that was not appreciated from my, from my comments at the last meeting. However, Mr. DeBoard approached me and mentioned that the camping proposal is at least on hold for now pending the outcome of the fall, the spring survey. But I would like to point out to you folks that to solicit positive commentary from the greater Douglas County community this spring in an attempt to offset the 900 already negative comments that you've received, it's, it demonstrates to us that you guys are hell-bent, though, still, on permitting camping at Sandstone Ranch, and that you're gonna try to find any way you can to justify going through with this proposal. And, and I would also like you to keep in mind that asking city-dwelling folks in, in Lark, in Highlands Ranch, Lone Tree, and Parker to comment on something that does not affect them, yet does affect the lives and homes of all the rural residents in Larkspur, I mean, that's akin to asking the people, the folks of Denver and Boulder to comment on and to vote on Wolf reintroduction. And we all know that that's been an abject failure for the state of Colorado. So, I mean, I realize you guys answer to the whole 400,000 people, but, you know, this initiative does not affect the folks in Highlands Ranch, Lone Tree, and Parker as it does the people in, in, in Larkspur as it does us. So in any event, I wanted to still make that point, and I look forward to, I appreciate Mr. DeBoard mentioning this to me, so I look forward to further communications on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being part of the dialogue. We'll take one more citizen comment, and then we'll adjourn for about five minutes and reset for our public hearing. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Gary Wood. I'm a Vietnam veteran, something I carry proudly with me as a combat service member. I'm a Boy Scout leader of many years and the proud father of an Eagle Scout. Troop 631 camped from Eagle to Golden State Park. We camped in the winter up by St. Elmo. There is plenty of camping along the Front Range and in the mountains. You don't need to do this to Sandstone Ranch. In the beginning, January 7, I believe that you all engaged in something that was less than transparent. 107 postcards went out to residents in a limited fashion, and I believe the intent was to try and keep this under the radar. That kind of obfuscation is continued because you switched the name from primitive to minimalist with the idea that it might change people's perception of what's going on. There's this business of word games that you all are playing. You tell us, you tell the audience, there is no plan before you, and if there were, you'd ask questions. To that point, I think the mayor of LA should have been asking questions a long time before that blew up. If you look at your Thoris, plan equals proposal. There is a proposal you all directed staff and the advisory board to work on. You tell me that there's a lack of access, that you've been asked for more access, but you won't tell me who asked, you won't tell me how many asked, and I would direct you to this particular document, Sandstone Ranch Open Space Natural Resource Inventory 2023. This is not out of date. And I read, recreational, educational research activities on the ranch have increased steadily since the space was purchased. The public has taken advantage of the access to Sandstone Ranch. There is no one that is being denied access to Sandstone Ranch. In a previous survey, nobody asked for camping. What is the fire risk? Well, let's take a quick look at the wildfire hazard overlay district. That's Sandstone Ranch, y'all, right there in a high fire danger. From the Douglas County Community Wildlife Protection Plan, the fire danger at this area is Class IV, Class V, which indicates that they would have a hard time fighting it if they could. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. So with that, we'll close citizen comment, bring it back to the board for any commissioner comments. Any commissioner comments?
If I may, Chair.
Please.
So, folks, just to address the questions with camping at Sandstone, we've suspended implementation of any camping plan. I mean, right now, that's, that's totally on hold. Is it in the trash can? I don't think it's in the trash can yet, but it's on hold. Okay? It's on the shelf. The reality is, we're gonna go ahead and ask the people of Douglas County, whom we have gotten requests to camp before, where do they place it? What kind of priority? That's gonna go out on our citizen survey. I know, though, you guys, you guys are still focused on Sandstone. Folks, well, I'm gonna remind my colleagues, we already had a conversation about another recreational amenity elsewhere in the county, and somebody said, right idea, wrong, wrong location. Tell you what, same thing might be the case here. I know why staff went with Sandstone. I appreciate staff being forthcoming on why it was Sandstone, because that's where we have the most personnel all the time. They thought that would make it safer. Guys, we might have to turn back to our staff and say, right idea, wrong location. And so I, I'd ask my colleagues to keep an open mind with that. I think we've heard plenty from the folks at Sandstone. Guys, I get it. We're, we're not up here pretending to listen and not listening. We're listening. But we gotta, I think we should still honor the requests that we have gotten in the past that we actually have gotten, and confirm that with our citizen survey so that we can, I don't know, make plans moving forward. Because we all live here. Just because one person wants something and another person doesn't want something, we've got to sort that out. We just can't turn to the person that wants something and say, I'm sorry. That's not allowed. So we, we need to sort that through, but I still maintain, the answer might be, right idea, wrong location, and we need to look at one of our other open space properties to, to move forward on any sort of camping. I think that's all I, I wanted to share with everybody after the citizen comment today.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Van Winkle.
Thank you, and I just, I, I think I just want to thank the public for showing up here at every opportunity and making your voice heard. It's important to me. I did get a bit just frustrated because since I've joined the board, no progress or advancement of any plan has been made, and now I think it's officially, I think, on hold. So I just want to thank you for showing up, making your voice heard, and just doing everything possible as citizens to protect your homes, because we share those values. We want to do everything possible, especially when it comes to wildfire, to protect Douglas County, and, Mr. Chair, I'm sure you can talk of more eloquently than I can about that, but we do things, I think, every day when we wake up, the three of us are worried about wildfire, we're worried about public safety, and those are the number one, or combined issue, number one top issue facing us when we wake up every day. So we're on it, we're listening to you, and everything, basically, back burner on hold.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Van Winkle. I, I agree with my colleagues, and I, I would begin again by saying thank you. Please stay with us, continue to listen and be aware. You know, from our perspective, totally agree. I mean, the, the reality is, we do represent 400,000 people, and if it's okay, we'd really like to be able to hear from everybody in Douglas County. I do understand that some are closer to certain areas than others, but I also want to be very transparent that I have never advanced anything at Sandstone. That was a staff recommendation as a potential location, but what I did hear was the desire to have more recreational amenities in the community. And so I want to be very clear, there is no plan pending additional citizen input. And I want to be 100% transparent. We, we want to hear. We're not gonna game the system and say, hey, do you like camping? We're gonna include in our questioning with the scientific pollster that we've used for 20 years, that all they do is collect objective data, a PhD, to find out exactly where citizens are at when it comes to recreational amenities and specifically camping. So we want to hear that, and nothing is gonna move forward pending additional citizen input. And if the citizens of this county say, we don't really care about that, and that's not of interest to us, then it will be abandoned completely. But I want to reiterate that that is part of our job, is to listen, to hear, and then to reach a decision that